Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, February 17, 2022, and we're here for a work session. And as always, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Tim, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. And today, we don't have any announcements, but so we're going to move right into the first discussion item, which is PKF O'Connor Davies LLP and Town of Riverhead Independent Audit Committee regarding matters surrounding the 2020 audit reporting. I'm going to ask Bill Rothar, our financial administrator, to please come forward and introduce this topic and the various people here to discuss the report. Bill, can you please come up? And the report is on the website. It's 100 pages long. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, all. We should have on Zoom Jeff DeVole and Jen Clark from PKF O'Connor Davies who are going to present, do a quick summary and present. Once they do, he'll open it up to questions for the board. It's a routine. It's 2020's audit that they're presenting. There's nothing out of the ordinary, basically the same as the last year. Everything's fine, and they'll let you know some of the details. The reports are available online. You guys have had them for a little while, a week or so, so I'll let them take over.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I believe the partner is supposed to be a panelist on this, Jeff DeVole? There he is.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeff.
For some reason, I'm having to see if I can turn my volume up here. I'm not sure I can hear very well for some reason. I'm not sure what my volume is.
You can hear you, though, Jeff.
You can't hear me, right?
You can.
Oh, you can. Okay. All right. I can barely hear you, so if I'm not ignoring anybody, if anybody asks any questions, I apologize in advance, but it's a little hard to hear. Jen, can you hear perfectly fine?
We'll try to be extra loud for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jeff DeVole. I'm the lead partner for PKF O'Connor Davies, the town's auditors. I'm joined today with my assistant manager on the account, the lead talent, Jennifer Clark, and here today to present to you the December 31, 2020 audit results. So if it's okay with everybody, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
All right, it's up, Jeff.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So again, this is the December 31, 2020 audit report presentation. It's a quick agenda for today. I know you probably have your own busy agenda today, so I'll try and be as brief as possible. We're going to go through the audit status, which of course is wrapped up at this point. I'll walk you briefly through our responsibilities, your responsibilities, some scope and approach, some business doctor, through some financial highlights, and then some required communications. And there's some exhibits that we'll talk about as well, and a couple of accounting matters that are on the horizon that I'd like to bring your attention to. Audit status, the significant audit areas addressed, and all the audit work is completed. We performed our audit in accordance with our plan. Our plan was discussed with the Independent Audit Committee on July 1, 2021, and our report is an unmodified opinion, which means that it is a clean opinion, which means the financial results reported in the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted auditing accounting principles as it relates to governments, and all the numbers are accurate from a materiality standpoint. Our responsibilities, we've been through this before. We've spent a lot of time. Our responsibility is to plan the audit, perform the audit in accordance with the standards that dictate how we perform audits. The ultimate goal is the opinion on the financial statements, which I said was an unmodified or clean opinion. We consider internal control purposes of our significant of our audit procedures, but we do not express an opinion on internal control. We accumulate misstatements, and of course, we conduct our audit with professional skepticism and evaluate the presentation of the financial information. We're also responsible for communicating significant matters related to the audit review. In our professional judgment, we consider and have disclosed any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses identified. We did not come across any illegal acts or fraud. Again, we'd be reporting them to you much earlier than this meeting and the process used by management to formulate sensitive accounting estimates. This is just a layout of responsibilities. Your responsibility, management's responsibility, is selecting appropriate accounting policies, making sure that the financial statements are in accordance with U.S. government GAAP as it relates to governments, establishing and maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting, apply the laws, regs, and grant agreements, and making sure that we, as auditors, audit all financial records related to the information that we need to conduct our audit. Those charge for governments' responsibilities, communicating with the auditors overseeing our financial reporting process. And then, of course, everybody's responsibility is to make sure that there's a proper tone at the top and to maintain and encourage a culture of honesty and integrity, and to design and implement policies and internal controls to prevent or detect fraud. This is just some of the audit scope and approach. These are the areas that we consider significant. Cash, revenues and receivables, accounts payable and expenditures, fund balance and net assets, allocations and grants because of the size, payroll and related expenses, and then the other things that we focus on as part of our audit on subsequent events, and ordering procedures in accordance with GAS, with government auditing standards. This year, there was an implementation of one, GASB, GASB 84, which had to do with the trust and agency accounts and reallocating some of the assets and liabilities that previously were in the trust and agency account in certain circumstances to the other funds. Some financial statement highlights, there was a decrease in net position of $9.1 million. If you've heard me in the past, you've talked about this government-wide statement and the impact on the financial statements. The government-wide statement, full proof statement, considers all assets and liabilities of the town. The town is run on an annual, year-by-year basis, not necessarily run on a full proof basis. You know, full proof basis is the way GM prepares their financial statements. So with this, for 2020, the net position on a full proof basis decreased by $9.1 million. That was largely to a couple of factors. One was the post-employment benefits increased by $40 million. That was driven largely by a decrease in the discount rate. So those in the business world know that when a discount rate decreases, the assets that you have to set aside and the liability that you're targeting is larger because the deemed rate of return is lower. But that had a significant impact on these financial statements. One other thing that affected this net position was there was a $26 million increase in the retirement system contribution, the police and fire, and the ERS, police and fire liability increased by $15.7 million, and the employee retirement system liability increased by about $10.2 million. This was largely driven by what was going on in the world at the time. This 123120 is, of course, in the year that the pandemic started. The retirement system contributions have a 331, a March 31 year end. So everybody knows what was going on in the world on March 23, 2020. There was a big decrease in the stock market, and even though the ERS and the PFRS liability is determined over a rolling number of years, that gigantic drawdown right at the end of the fiscal year, the 331 ERS PFRS fiscal year, you know, caused the liability to increase by almost $26 million between the two of them. And there was also a change because the discount rate also dropped in regards to the calculation of those liabilities. The, excuse me, net position in governmental activities was 63.4, and the business-type activities was 88.8. The business-type activities, which is the water and snowfalls, actually had the decrease in net position was $3.3 million. The increase in net position of all the business-type activities was a $5.8 million increase. Any questions so far? Just stop me, please.
Jeff, this is Frank Baer. And I just had a quick question about the rising cost of the retirements. Does health insurance bear a big role in that cost increase?
It does. It's a lot of factors. Excuse me, it's a lot of factors. It's the discount rate. It's the, it's the, what they call, what they call medical inflation. So as the cost of medical insurance goes up, the cost providing those benefits post-retirement naturally goes up. So it's a, it's a, it's a big factor.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. So we talked about the government-wide statements. This is a little disclosures on the fund basis financial statements. The general fund, which is the main operating fund of the town, increased by $1.7 million, excuse me, or 23%. The highway fund increased by 32% to $960,000. The capital projects fund, which we know is a multi-year fund, increased by $391,000, and the community preservation fund decreased by $18,000, which is largely driven by the revenue that comes in from the 2% CPF fund and the cost of both the debt service in the CPF fund and the purchase of property under the program. All the non-major funds had an increase of $1 million, or 52%. So of all these funds, these are the, this is the increase or decrease in the funds. All operating funds operated in the surplus in 2020, except for the ambulance district, which had a very small operating deficit. On the right side of the screen is a breakout of fund balance by type. Non-spendable is, non-spendable by nature, it's generally inventory and prepaid. The restricted fund balance, which is largely the reserves on the JML. Assigned fund balance, which is the fund balance in the special revenue funds, which are, you know, which are assigned to a specific purpose, and therefore, the purposes of calculating the financial statement caption represent the, represent assigned fund balance. And then lastly, as I mentioned, the unassigned fund balance is the unassigned fund balance in total for the town, and it was $6.7 million. The fund balance generally is calculated based on the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. It's measured generally by comparing it to the ensuing year's budgeted expenditures, and the unassigned fund balance in the general fund represents somewhere around 13% of the expenditures for the ensuing year. So I always say unsolicited that if you're between 10 and 20%, you're generally in a safe level of free fund balance. Less than 10%, you would be subject to swings that might happen that would affect fund balance and decrease it to a dangerous level. And over 20 or 30% of fund balance, the state controller perhaps would consider that you're, you know, hoarding funds. So I'm happy to report here that you're what I consider in the safe level of fund balance. Here's some budgetary highlights of the general fund, again, which is the main operating fund. Revenues were under budget by $1.7 million. And what was beneficial to the town and to the general fund was that expenditures were also on the budget, so they underspent the expenditure budget by $5.4 million. I already told you about the unassigned fund balance, 13.1%, so, you know, that's what I would consider a safe level of fund balance. On the horizon, there's some, there's some things that are coming down the pike. I will bore you with the, with the chapter and verse on all these. The biggest one coming down the pike is GASB 87, which is leases, which has been on the drawing board for five, six, seven years now by both FASB and GASB, and it's finally being implemented for the, for the 22 year for the town. So we'll work with, with finance department on implementing that GASB as it relates to the current year we sit in, which is 2022. Here's some required communications. Again, we went through these, but I'll just briefly highlight some things here. Auditor's responsibility and professional standards and planning, scope, and timing of the audit. This is generally communicated to you, and it was communicated on April 20 through our engagement letter. Then there's some qualitative aspects of accounting practices that we need to disclose. And this one, in the middle of the page here, relates to accounting policies, and I'm happy to report that there are no matters that came to our attention that require us to inform you about the effects of significant accounting policies in controversial or emerging areas. The next one is qualitative aspects related to significant unusual transactions, and there were no significant unusual transactions to report. And the estimates and management's judgment, we all know that these financial statements are tremendous. The numbers are tremendous, and what is important to note is that many of the numbers in the financial statements are a process of estimates. We disclose a couple here, depreciation, claims, and judgments. Depreciation is, of course, the systematic write-off of capital assets on the government-wide statements. Claims and judgment liability, compensated absences, landfill closures, the net pension liability as it relates to ERS and PFRS, and the other post-employment benefits. Those are all estimates because they're based on presumptions and/or actuarially determined amounts, and management believes that these estimates used are adequate. We have evaluated those estimates, and we agree. Financial statement disclosures. The only point here is that the financial statement disclosures are consistent and clear, as clear as they can be with complicated financial statements. And I'm also encouraged to say that there were no significant difficulties in dealing with management related to the performance of our audit. There were no disagreements with management, finance department. Mr. Rothar and his department cooperated fully and allowed us unfettered access to records, provided us timely responses to our inquiries, and we're appreciative of that. Management representation letters. We have, we're required to receive a rep letter that will be dated, that is dated January 24. Management consultation with other accountants. We are not, this is, excuse me, this is, relates to opinion shopping on controversial matters, and there were no such consultations with other accountants. And the last disclosure on the page here talks about matters discussed regarding our retention as auditors, and there were no contingencies of us performing the audit under certain conditions. As auditors, we have to be independent. We affirm that we are independent. And then the last item on here is there are some corrected and uncorrected misstatements. As part of a financial statement audit, there's always corrected and uncorrected misstatements. The one at the bottom of the page here has to do with a sewer charge, an AR on sewer charge that was corrected by management. I'm sorry, that is, that is uncorrected, right? Jen? Yes, that's the uncorrected mistake. That $390,000, we have to look at materiality. We don't consider that a material item based on our calculations and materiality. And then there's some corrected items where they were corrected by management, and that was to correct depreciation expense of $706,000 and to record a reserve for excess levy of $1.2 million. The depreciation adjustment had to do with a glitch in the admin software that was caught by our, our calculations. And then if I can turn over to Jen, we have a couple of internal control matters that Jen will handle.
Hi. So one of our responsibilities as auditor is to report to you certain internal control matters or compliance issues that we discovered during the audit, and there are three such matters that we have to discuss with you this year. The first relates to the justice court audits. We reported a material weakness as the audits for the years 2016 through 2020 were not submitted timely as they're required to be to the state. I am happy to report that as of this morning, we received all the required paperwork to finalize the 2016 through 2019 justice court audits, and that was just a matter of we hadn't received the paperwork necessary to finalize those audits. The second matter we had to bring up-
We should be issuing those statements in the next couple of days, I would imagine, right?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, we have everything we need. It's just that the admin department needs to process them.
Okay.
Regarding the real property tax cap, the town was in excess of the legal limit on the property tax for the years of 2018 through 2020. This appears to be the result of an amount that pre-filled on the state's website, and it was the incorrect number pre-filled, and as a result, the tax cap calculation was incorrect and in error, the town levied in excess of the cap without the proper approval in advance. And as a result, set aside certain monies in the property tax cap reserve, which will be used to reduce the levy in future years. And the third and final matter that we were required to report is a transfer to the special trust fund from the general fund, which appears that the, it was the board's intent to transfer these monies. However, the resolution from the board was unclear as to whether or not this amount was to be transferred, and without the proper approval, we had to report that as a compliance matter. Does anyone have any questions on those?
That's it? Bill, anyone else? Where's Bill?
Okay, so if I'm not hearing that there are any questions, I apologize if there are and I'm missing them. Supervisor, are we good to move on?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much, and have a good day.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank the supervisor town board, and again, the finance department, and of course, the Independent Audit Committee for their involvement in the audit, and we appreciate everybody's cooperation. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff and Jennifer.
Thank you. Devin?
Yes.
Did we have anybody else coming in to speak on this matter?
Yeah, for Bill, that's it for this topic.
Okay. All right. Well, then, we're going to move on to the second topic.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. Our next discussion concerns matters surrounding an update on our comprehensive plan effort. And I know we have Bob White from AKRF with us today, and I'll ask Jeff Murphy to come forward and briefly introduce the topic to us.
Absolutely.
Actually, reintroduce the topic.
You already did.
This is an ongoing discussion, obviously, and a summary of this is also on our website.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Is anybody, any of the audience?
We have a whole stack.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah. We made sure everybody, just everybody. We give out swag during our presentation.
Oh, that's nice. We didn't get one.
We want people to forget us.
So we're finally moving on, huh?
We are moving on. So this is accumulation of the last two years' worth of work and a summary of the work that has been produced, essentially, not just in the last month, but we've disappeared the last month, and that was stated at the conclusion of our public meetings last December. We've had an extensive outreach program as part of the comprehensive plan update. This is Bob White, Assistant Vice President from Alley Team Rosing and Fleming. He is the project manager for the, for the comp plan update. This all began two years ago with the stakeholders' interviews. Last year, we launched the interactive website, which include the community survey, the map function of the website, which you could go on the website and post comments on maps of the area of your issues and concerns. There was an email link that you could post comments directly to the consulting team. And then, beginning of September last year, we had four area meetings around the town, the community meetings with the different hamlets, followed by that, we had five topic meetings, and we also had a central advisory committee meeting at the end of last year. And we had to take time off, so to speak, from the public so that we could assimilate and accumulate all that data and try to formulate it into a cohesive document, and that resulted in 128-page document of all the comments received to date. This document and the comments that we are going to be referring to today, they're all posted on the comprehensive plan website as we speak. So all you have to do is go onto the website. The link is included in the four-page summary. We distilled it to 128 pages down. We're not going to read 128 pages for you today. We can if you'd like to, but I don't think you really want to. So we distilled it down to four pages, and Bob White is going to talk about the summary of those results. But the very first paragraph, we include the link for the website. So if anybody has a hard time finding it, we include the link on the very first page, and it will take you right to all the documents that we're talking about. So as I said, very comprehensive process up to this point. We've had a lot of really good comments, a lot of good meetings. This is just a continuation, though. This is the second round. Today's meeting is really the kickoff for the second round of the committee meetings. This is going to be followed by another CAC meeting, the Central Advisory Committee, and then followed by, by going back to having the topic meetings combined with the community meetings, and that will begin later in March into April. And the goal is to have a draft document to you of the plan by the end of this summer. So we were planning on releasing it to the public sometime in the beginning of summer, and then the formal document as a draft document to the end of the summer. So that is the goal of where we are of getting to the finish line. So that is the goal of where we are of getting to the finish line. Understand that the draft plan that you will be reviewing has to be followed up by a generic environmental impact statement, and that's going to take us through the end of this fall and winter, and we're looking for having adoption of the plan beginning of, uh, in spring of next year. So that's just a very broad stroke in terms of the schedule going forward. So, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, um, otherwise, I'll just turn over to Bob.
I just have one question right now. What, what's the scope of the, uh, meeting with the CAC regarding?
It's going to be a more detailed presentation of what you're hearing today.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, also going to go over the schedule going forward in terms of what the next steps are.
With, with regard to environmental issues that the CAC normally would review?
Yes. Not, not, that's, that, not the, the CAC is kind of, it's confusing with the conservation advisory committee, we're talking about the central advisory committee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I bet.
It is confusing.
Gotcha. Now I know.
Yep. I'll just add that we were also thinking we'd have a focus on transportation and transportation management.
So, uh, more detailed approaches that, after this, after this meeting, we'll be meeting with the central advisory committee, uh, followed by the combined, um, and, um, hamlet meetings and the topic meetings, because a lot of the issues that we've seen so far are really by the community, have been focused around various subject matters, such as agricultural preservation has been probably the top of the list, community character, uh, transportation, sustainability, and each of those can be broken down by the different topics. After that, we're going to be meeting with all the different various, uh, town committees, such as, we're going to combine the farmland preservation committee with the ag preservation committee with the TDR committee, that will be one meeting, uh, with the consultants and that committee, because one of the things I know that they're biting the bit at is to amend the TDR code. That translates across all three committees, so that will be just one meeting, we're not going to go to three separate meetings to talk about it, we'll just have it as one meeting. And then we'll meet with the alternate transportation committee meeting, direct committee, all those different committees, we'll have those, uh, we'll meet with each of those different committees. And then following that, we're going to come back and start formating, formulating the recommendations back to you. So that's the sequence of events, and the timing depends on how much feedback we get along the way, and barring any, um, stumbling blocks, we're looking at getting those first recommendations to you probably at the beginning of June.
So when does the public come back into the, uh?
That comes, where I said that we met, meet with the central advisory committee, and then followed by that, that's when we go back out to the public. So that's looking at probably the end of March, beginning of April.
Are you doing it by hamlets again, or how are you going to?
No, we're, as I said, we're going to combine those with the topic meetings, so instead of having nine meetings with four with the, with the different areas of the town and five topic meetings, we're going to combine those and have five meetings, and we're looking at having those over at the Riley Avenue School. Because last, the last meetings we had over at the senior center-
Yeah, because that was the, that was an issue with some of the concerns of the people that live on the western side of town that, that, you know, trying to get to, uh, the senior center-
It's a faraway across the town.
-was difficult, and so they would like to be a part of this as well.
Yeah, and when speaking with Sid, he said that the Riley Avenue School is apparently a very good location for them, so, uh, we're going to be reaching out to them and try to schedule that date.
It's at least a day trip by horse and pony.
Yes.
All right, Jeff, so, uh, I know that the DR, uh, TDR issue has been an issue for a very long time here in Riverhead. Um, do you think by the time you're done, you're going to have something solid in place?
Yes.
So we can move forward?
Yes.
This has been lingering on the three, four, five years, and, uh, so that's good to hear.
Yep.
That you can assure us that, that's critical. The other thing is, and I know I asked you before, was that the thousand-plus sensitive, um, environmental acreage at Epcot has to be secured through that plan?
Yep.
That is critical, um, it, it's a must, and, um, you have to make sure that it's identified, and that should be, uh, included. And in addition, and lastly, it's also critical that the patent book is part of this whole plan. It's been adopted, I believe I was told that it was adopted in June of twenty twenty, the, um, patent book?
It was adopted in January of last year.
January of last year, okay.
Yeah.
So now that the patent book, um, has been adopted, we need to make sure that all those provisions are also included in that. And I think if we, if we cover those areas, the TDRs, the Epcot property security in our comprehensive plan and the patent book, and all the work that you've been doing, and I'm glad again that, to see that, I know initially you wanted to do the, uh, a lot of the meetings in Agobah, and they were successful. I mean, most of them were very successful, and we did have, but it's good to have a central location.
We had really good turn, good turnout, uh, good feedback. Um, there are a core group of, uh, citizens that came to every single meeting, others came just for their areas. Um, but I think that, uh, in fairness, uh, to the western half of town, waiting river, bathing hollow, we really need to have the second round of meetings farther west, so that gives everybody an opportunity to meet with the consultants, ask them questions, rather than having to drive from waiting river all the way over to, you know, to the senior center, that's quite a, quite a drive.
Right, okay, so it's being addressed, and that's, that's great to hear.
We've also been getting a lot of, uh, requests for, uh, the change of, uh, the Sound Avenue corridor, um, is that something that can be implemented through the comprehensive plan, or is that a separate issue?
Um, right now, it's already included and adopted by the town board for Sound Avenue, the next step is really, uh, is the implementation of it, and that can be done through the Landmarks Commission.
Right.
Uh, so I think our, I can reach out to Richard Weins, get that onto their agenda, and then what we really need to do is have an outreach to SHPO, through the state offices to get them to do it, and then-
But it's something that will come under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan?
Um, I think, I don't think we need to wait.
Oh.
I think we're already ahead of that right now, because it's already in the comprehensive plan, the two thousand and three plan, and it's already been adopted by resolution by the town board and the state, uh, incentive, so it's, that part's done. So right now, what we need is to now have the implementation part of that, and that's not a comprehensive plan issue, that's the town board issue in terms of what do we do with that?
The town's really completed what we need to do on the town level that goes to the state.
Well, we need to go to the next step, and that is, is to start coming up with standards as to, okay, how do we protect it? We have the goals, the policies, and, and the resound, uh, resolutions saying, the town board is saying, yes, this is worthy of protection. How do you do that?
Now we need the codes.
It's got to be in the code.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's just housekeeping?
And it's, that's an important step, though, as an implementation strategy, and the question is, now we've got to start looking at the historic and scenic qualities along Sound Avenue. It could be things in terms of the nature of the zoning, setbacks, design guidelines, things of that nature. Uh, one of the big critical functions that we are facing through the comprehensive plan, not just for Sound Avenue, but for the other, uh, roads that are rural and clean, is function versus design. We all want Sound Avenue to, to look nice and be nice, but as you know, there's traffic jams come pumpkin season, pumpkin pickens season, and for example, Penny Road and Sound Avenue, that's a big, uh, traffic choking point, because tractor trailers coming from the Tang Farm cannot negotiate that turn without going to oncoming traffic. So how do you improve that intersection without making it look like it's an urban setting? Um, other intersections include, uh, Edwards Avenue and Sound Avenue. Trucks cannot negotiate that turn. Those roads were designed decades ago, and they are not designed for today's traffic. So, um, those, that's kind of the checks and balances, safety versus visual and aesthetic concerns, and somehow, there's, we've got to come to a meeting of mind as to what's going to prevail.
Totally agree with that. Thank you.
And it's not going to be an easy path. Uh, I'll, I'll just say that right now, it's, it's, one of the easier things, just to update the board, is you saw that, um, Edwards Avenue and Route twenty-five, that's going to begin construction in the next couple of years. We just had the, uh, public meeting on that last week. Um, that's long overdue, and that's, uh, obviously a dangerous situation, or traffic intersection, major choking point, and I think with the, with the road improvements, this is going to be better for everyone in the long run, it's, it's long overdue.
Absolutely. The comprehensive plan also is going to address the DC one and DC three issues, combined with the pattern book, so we can get a formula that everybody will understand that we know going forward, what we're going to allow, what we're not going to allow, what we're looking for, design, style, and all that, so that, that's an important facet coming out of this also.
And I know that we've already met our, um, the goal for affordable housing in the town, uh, but there is a demand for additional rental units, and the question is, where should they go? The market right now is opening up for the downtown area, we've seen, uh, new applications coming before us for more rental units in our downtown. Um, I know that there is a push by some in the, in the community to have rental housing along Route fifty-eight. I'm not a fan of that, I think it more appropriate in the downtown location. Um, I think the, the goal of, or recommendation to have rental housing on fifty-eight is more in line of opening up receiving areas for the TDR program. I think first and foremost is, is what type of development do we want and where, and the TDR should follow that, the TDR shouldn't be leading it. So, yes, we need more receiving areas for, um, TDRs, I think they can be done elsewhere in a more productive manner, that's more market-driven, rather than just saying, okay, we're going to put residential on fifty-eight.
I think that was born out of the growth of Northwell Health and that general area as, you know, housing for nursing or healthcare professionals, but that, that's where I think that came from.
Yeah, and we've, we've spoken with the hospital, uh, because they did buy the Mercy, uh, property, and one of the, the things that they're looking at putting there is housing for, housing for their employees. Absolutely, uh, that's absolutely critical, and I, I fully support that, they're, uh, one of our larger, uh, employment generators, they need that housing support to keep the staff there. Uh, the other part is, uh, the assisted living component, um, we really need assisted living facilities somewhere in the town. I think I found a really good property that's close proximity to the hospital, so we're working with the property owner to see what we can do to put that effort forward.
That need has been there for a long time.
So, if we can put that forward in the comprehensive plan, rather than wait, you know, for another two years, I think it'd be well worth the effort.
Agreed.
And also, I think I have one addition, so I have four assurances.
Delicious growing.
The TDR, the thousand-plus acres, the patent book, and let's not forget the overlay district.
Yep. All right, so what I'd like to do is turn over to Bob now, just to go, give us a summary of, of all the comments received. Uh, as I said, this is a hundred and twenty-eight page document, it's on the website, if you're ever bored, you have insomnia, you can download this and read it. Uh, we also distilled it to a six-page report that's also on the website, and then for today's presentation purposes, we distilled it down to a four-page document, uh, and again, we're not looking to read the whole four pages, but it gives you a guide as to, uh, this, in a summary as to the hundred and twenty-eight page report.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Folks. Um, thanks for having us. Uh, so yeah, I'll just go through what we've been doing, it really began, uh, a couple of years ago, um, with the interviews, and that's first on the list in the handout, was we interviewed, um, the town departments to get the, a sense of what the issues were within the town as to, you know, long-term and near-term and long-term planning issues in front of the, in front of the town of Riverhead. And we also spoke to the county, um, Public Works and the, uh, school district about, uh, schools and educational needs, and that was kind of the initial fact-finding step. Um, I think we began that in January or February of twenty twenty, and then unfortunately, we had, uh, you know, our pandemic hit, and we went into a little hiatus for a bit. But we, we, uh, we got back in gear towards the end of twenty twenty and started, uh, to begin our, our outreach, reinstitute our outreach, um, and as Jeff said, we started that, we organized it around hamlets and around, um, geograph, uh, topic areas. So, um, the hamlets focused on, uh, the four meetings that we had within the individual hamlet areas, um, and, and what the community had raised as concerns, they're summarized in the handout. I mean, we've heard a lot about farmland preservation, as Jeff said, uh, economic development and redevelopment opportunities, particularly along, uh, Route fifty-eight. Um, I'll take a step back and say, in terms of agriculture, we heard both about preservation and how, how, and viability, how you make farms, not that you preserve the land, but how do you make them economically viable and diversifying agricultural economies. Uh, park and recreation needs came up, water resources in the context of both, uh, protecting groundwater and, and, uh, surface waters in the iconic, uh, river watershed. Housing and community services, Jeff touched on it in terms of the housing, uh, uh, housing needs, both from the perspective of redevelopment opportunities and new housing, and the, and from the perspective of, of providing a diverse, uh, housing type. And transportation and infrastructure, um, we heard about, uh, traffic needs, improvement needs in terms of traffic circulation, and also infrastructure, I think the primary focus was on, uh, water supply and, and the river, water, water district.
Can I spec up on, on to economic development? What groups did you reach, what business groups did you reach out to concerning economic development?
Um, we had a, a specific meeting, I, I can-
Oh, no, it's, you know, but were there various businesses, like the Business Advisory Committee for the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, and, uh, we had a, a, a topic meeting on that, and, and Jeff invited a, a range of, uh, participants, I know the Tanger Outlet Mall was participating, and the Chamber of Commerce was involved as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. So in terms of what we, what we, uh, did, or in terms of our outreach with the, with the, at the hamlet level, we talked a lot about, uh, again, you know, drinking water came up, uh, water quality, retaining rural character was important, um, zoning and zoning needs when maybe necessary as the town moves into its next, this, this is a, this is a plan that'll be, uh, you know, twenty years, the last plan was twenty years, so what kind of zoning changes may be necessary to implement this long-term vision, uh, needs in, in terms of schools, uh, needs downtown, and we heard about, you know, protecting the, the, the visual and historic character of downtown, and also safety and, um, and security, flooding, uh, flooding needs or flood prevention needs along the iconic river watershed, and also in the context of flooding and long-term planning, climate change as it relates to, um, surface water systems and, and, uh, what we need to do to think ahead, uh, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years into the future. We had the, uh, five topic meetings, these, these were towards the end of last year, um, and, uh, they were organized around five specific topics, the first was transportation, uh, the second was environmental protection and sustainability, we had a very specific, uh, discussion on downtown Riverhead and the Route fifty-eight corridor, uh, housing and community service needs within the town, and, and our, our final topic meeting, um, was on agriculture and farmland preservation, and, and they were attended, uh, both in person and online, and the topic meetings were in person and online as well, so I think there was a pretty good outreach effort, uh, in terms of, um, you know, trying to, uh, to get the community as, involved as much as we could and get, and get the expertise of your departments and, and, uh, and groups within the town. Um, the topic areas, I brought up a different, uh, you know, some additional topics, we talked a bit about solar farms, also in the context of, you know, alternative energy sources and climate change, uh, avoidance, or, you know, doing our part to, to minimize changes in the climate. Wetland preservation, the revitalization of downtown Riverhead, Route fifty-eight, again, was a common theme. Um, recreational cannabis and how that gets addressed in the future as a, as a, as a business in the town, uh, came up at a number of our meetings. Affordable housing needs and homeownership, um, TDR, we talked about in the context of farmland preservation and how this sort of, how these visions sort of translate into zoning updates or changes in the town code. We had a, um, we had a public survey that we, uh, did both online and in, and in paper form, uh, to get as much participation as we could, we handed out, uh, public surveys at the various, um, meetings that we had, and we took the, those, uh, forms and, and, entered them into our online database, and, and the survey could also be done online by the community. We, uh, summarized that data and that's in greater detail in the, in the report, but again, you know, the, the themes that we heard back, uh, what we heard back, I should say, in terms of the, the survey was farmland and open space preservation, Route fifty-eight corridor, um, traffic congestion and, and, uh, safety and management, downtown Riverhead, and natural resources and environmental protection, I think were the five key topics of our survey. Um, and, uh, and then we had a specific question about Route fifty-eight and what we thought, or what the, the community, uh, thought, uh, could be options in terms of reuse and redevelopment, uh, and, and some common answers that came up were entertainment and the indoor-based, outdoor recreational facilities, sort of diversifying the use groups there, uh, medical, healthcare, and professional services. Um, and, uh, we also had, uh, a social, uh, pin, what's called a social pinpoint interactive map, which is a geographic-based way of, of providing comments, uh, on a map of the town, where you could put almost like a little post-it on a map and, and offer your comments. That was, uh, you know, another way that we invited the, the, uh, community to participate, and we got a number of comments through that, you know, forum, uh, and, um, and we heard a lot about, you know, parks and recreational, it's very- And we heard a lot about, you know, parks and recreationally, it's very, very similar types of comments on the geographic format. And then finally, there, we have a website devoted, we have a, we have a site on your town website that's devoted to the master plan update, where people could submit written and email comments, and there was a comment form that they could submit as well. So we compiled those. They're in the compendium. And again, not to reiterate, but I'll just, you know, farmland preservation, scenic corridors, the protection of scenic corridors, I guess we talked a little bit about that with Jeff a few moments ago. The hamlets and the need for transportation improvements also came up. And I think that's in the context of primarily traffic management, and, but also, we heard about, you know, opening more opportunities for different types of multimodal transportation. So Jeff talked about the next steps. Do you have any questions on the summary?
Before we go into the next step, I think through the different forms of platforms that we may be able to, the public to provide feedback, so I think we're starting to see a trend towards the topic areas that are generally concerned to the community. Farmland preservation, by far, I think, is the number-one priority of the community that we've heard so far. So that is one of our focus points, obviously, with the TDR and advisory committee. We're gonna be having a meeting specifically to address that issue. One of the things that we touched upon, which was a real lightning rod, was the issue of hamlet boundaries and where are they located? We tried to formulate a consensus on where the boundaries are. It's not going to happen. Everybody has their own opinion as to where their hamlet boundary is. And as soon as you put a line on a map that the hamlet boundary is one location, the person on the other side is going to disagree. So I think it's obviously going to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, but there's not gonna be a definitive map saying this is where the boundary is. Because this argument has been going on for the last 30, 40 years through the comprehensive plan process. It's gonna continue on. So I think it's a point of interest. But in terms of our ability to do data gathering and that sort of thing, that's not the most important thing, is identifying the community character to which a certain area is. The Jamesport-Aquabog-Laura area, the Wading River area, obviously, those are two different areas of town. They have their own community identity. As long as we understand those community identities and respect them, I think that's the primary goal of what we're trying to do.
Well, isn't it basically garnered by the zip code?
The zip code, I gotta tell you, there's so many different ways to define what a hamlet boundary is. Zip codes, census boundary, town board resolutions, town board maps, historical maps, physical and geographical areas, all go into defining where a boundary is, and they don't line up with one another, not one of them.
For instance, I'm in Bating Hollow, and my zip code is Calverton. We don't have our own, so, you know, if somebody asks me, or if it comes up on a computer and I put my zip code in, it just comes up automatically, Calverton, but, you know, it doesn't bother me in the least.
And people are very, very passionate about what their identity is. And what it is to them, what it is in a census tract, what it is in a zip code, it's gonna be different. And we're not, there's not gonna be a single answer to defining what that is.
It is important, though, because real estate values vary from hamlet to hamlet.
Absolutely.
You know, if I can advertise my house as Aquabog, I may get a dollar or two more than if I advertise it as RIRAD, or vice versa.
Yeah. I used to live in the hamlet of Neuyak in the South Fork, Sag Harbor zip code. It was Sag Harbor Fire District, Sag Harbor School District. So all these different variables go into, what is your, where's your hamlet identity? So it's not an easy issue to come up with, aha, Eureka, one answer fits all. Because there is no one answer that fits all of them.
It was really a way to organize our outreach. We weren't intending to draw lines on streets to create hamlets that are specifically gonna be, you know, designated as part of the zoning code or something. It was really to organize our outreach efforts by the different hamlets, so.
Just to go back to the ag preservation, open space preservation, and the TDR component. I mean, I've spoken about it ad nauseam to anybody that'll listen, but the real benefit of the TDR program, especially when we were in a major deficit with the CPF funding issue, was that it was borne by the investors. The money that was raised by the investors was going to pay for the preservation funds, and that it wasn't gonna be on the shoulders of the taxpayers. So that's, and that still is a great, you know, component. But now we're catching up also with the CPF funding going in a small boon. So now is a real great opportunity to balance smart growth in certain areas with preservation of open space and farmland in other areas.
And I think to preserve more farmland, I think there needs to be understanding by the community that means that there needs to be more development in key locations in the town.
Exactly. It has to be balanced.
And it's checks and balances, and I'm totally in board with that. And I think that there should be more density in certain areas of the town. And then you do that with a TDR component, you preserve more open space somewhere else. And that's, that's the way the TDR program functions.
That's the purpose of the TOD.
Yep.
And the Town Square, not so much of Town Square, but the development.
Yeah, the downtown urban areas.
Yeah, DC1, so that's great. Anything else, gentlemen?
I'd like to go with just the next steps. I touched upon it briefly at the beginning of the presentation. Obviously, the next step is with the Central Advisory, I hate calling them CAC.
I'd be confused for a minute. I should have been reading all.
I wish we had called it something else than that, but we're so far along. It's the Central Advisory Committee. They are the key component groups, including business, environmental, farmers. Every interest group is, has a representation on that committee. There are our next step. We hope to have a meeting with them within the next month. Followed by that, we're gonna go back out to the community meetings again, and by Riley Avenue School. And then we're gonna start meeting with the different advisory committees throughout the town. Once we complete all that, we're looking at having all the goals back to you in the end of May, beginning of June time period, and then presenting a full page, full document to you by the end of the summer.
So I have some questions. In terms of, how are you addressing more in-depth about school overcrowding? In terms of, it's easy to say that we need, you know, larger school facilities, but the infrastructure itself, sidewalks crossing areas, you know, things need to be developed around the school area for safe, more safer routes for kids. I'm also, you know, wondering, like, we have a large influx from students that technically live in Southampton that come here, and how does that affect our highway taxes and things like that? So what is, what is the comprehensive plan doing to overall address the overcrowding in schools and how we proceed in the future?
Bob? There's not, there's not an easy answer to that. That's the bottom line. As you said, that a lot of the school kids come from out of town, to which we have no zoning authority over what they plan in their town. They have their own master plan for the Riverside area, and they're proposing a lot of new residential dwelling units in that area. We have to be very mindful of what they're planning and how it's going to affect us, and we need to have a seat at the table, so to speak, especially with the school district, so that everybody understands what the financial consequences is to the Riverhead residents.
Are you seeking projections of what you, you know, are you working with the school at all to get projections of what will be the population count for students between now and what will it be in 2025 and 2030?
That we are doing, and that will be done both in the context of the plan and also the environmental impact statement that we'll be preparing, because it's going to have a section on community services, one of which will be the educational system.
And you take accountability, like, again, about our streets and the development and the infrastructure that we need to be put in, outside of just, we need bigger schools. I mean, they just did a major expansion recently, and it's already full and it's already overcrowded.
Right.
So it was short-lived.
I live in Queens. I mean, there's been a lot that the city's actually been doing too in terms of safe streets and safe walks to school, different types of design standards for intersections. And I'm not saying that that's, you know, transportable here, but I do understand the issue. And we want, I grew up walking to my elementary school. I go back to my elementary school now, and everyone seems to be driven there. But it would be good to, you know, from the perspective of children's health and community to have more walking opportunities for school, I think, and I think safe, but they have to be safe streets and safe car.
Will there be a portion of the comprehensive plan that's gonna specifically address more in-depth?
And not just the school district, Ken, the GEIS, that's gonna be a really, and we haven't really talked about it very much at this point, because we haven't gotten that far in the process yet, but the GEIS project, process, that's gonna evaluate what the positive and negative externalities and consequences of the recommendations of the plan. You're gonna see if all of a sudden we're proposing, you know, a thousand new school-age kids from the downtown area, and hypothetically speaking, you, as elected body, need to know what the impacts of that recommendation would be. And that way, we'll lead you to conclude, yes, we're in favor of that recommendation, or no, we're not, and we need to go in a different direction. So the GEIS is a critical part of this overall planning process. Not just for that, but for infrastructure, what are our road capacities? What is gonna be needed for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years for road capacities? What are we gonna need for infrastructure for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? There's, the goals and policies and recommendations from the land use element touch upon every single element of those subject areas financially to the taxpayers. And that's what the GEIS is going to evaluate.
It's gonna be interesting to see the comparison from the last comprehensive study and this one concerning the schools.
Riverhead is a very popular area. It's a desirable area, and the projections for the growth is going to continue.
Yes.
And we need to be prepared to address that from a fiscal standpoint.
Well, without putting our heads in the sand about the growth, you have to, I know I've spoken to numerous people that are packing up and moving out of the district because they're not happy with recent events that have happened in the district. So if we're talking about the expansion and growth of the school district, in reality, we also have to look at what's being lost out of the school district and what will be lost in the future along the way. It's a, it's a fact.
And there is a demographic change as well that affects all that. And the baby boomers, which I'm on the tail end of, for the first time in our history, we are no longer the major population demographic in the country. All the millennials and all the younger generations are now becoming that larger demographic. And this document has got to address what their needs are gonna be, because it's definitely gonna have an impact on their livelihood. We definitely need to have entry-level housing for them, so they don't leave. We need to address the school impact, as Ken has pointed out, because if people tend to want to live where there's a good, healthy school system, they don't want to see overcrowded housing, or overcrowded school district. So this document's not just for us tail-end baby boomers, it's for the next generation of people that are living there.
So I have a question. I really appreciate that you're looking at Riverside, and you're looking at the master plan in Southampton. I think in doing that, you've seen that they're planning to build 2,200 units, just in one location. I'm wondering if you are addressing the school boundaries with the state, okay? Because when those school boundaries were done, the population was insignificant, okay? And it made sense to do that. So I'm uber-concerned about that for all the reasons that Ken has said, infrastructure, etc., etc., because my, and this is the reality of the last master plan, I don't think look enough at what other towns disallow, okay? And that's why we become the shopping center for the East End. And that is on our infrastructure, which is disconcerting to me. In addition, and I think, I just want to bring this up, and I'm gonna keep bringing this bell, that this has a five-year horizon look back. And Jeff, you brought this up in a meeting, which, the master plan in general, that it's not something, no business, and the town is a business, would subject themselves to, this is what we're gonna be for the next 20 years, because we've already run into a lot of problems doing it that way. I just also want to transfer a second, affordable housing, and ask you if condos have come up? Because I don't know how, you know, millennials strapped with college debt are gonna have even a down payment out of five, eight, four, five, $600,000 house. And do we have any, and I've been talking to some developers about that, and one that is doing a project here, they are looking at that in Huntington, so that young people have the opportunity for equity. You know, they can start to build equity.
A lot of that, I think, is wrapped into the TOD as well, opportunities for that, yeah.
Yeah, Bob, you touch on a really important part is, there has to be fee ownership in order for people to establish roots, and there has to be a housing cost, say, $200,000 housing unit fee title that allows the, the, Greg Burman's a great example. He's getting married this year. He's buying a house. Where is he gonna live? That he can afford. And, you know, the $200,000 entry-level dwelling it does not exist. $500,000 is the new norm, and that's where you really have to start looking for a new house these days, in Riverhead. So.
Now, when you back up and talk about affordable housing, affordable housing is $1,900 a month for a one-bedroom apartment downtown. That's not affordable to a lot of young people. So unless we, it gets changed at the top end, where they use the salary-based of Nassau and Suffolk Counties, and that's where they come up with the formula that they use, that's not correct. The formula, the process itself, doesn't help make affordable housing for the younger people that are trying to get out from under their parents' rules and trying to, you know, move out on their own.
And that's the reason why we have overcrowded housing, is because we don't have the housing type to meet that population demand. And Tim, you raised a good point, is Long Island's a big island. And we try to come up with, what are affordable housing unit is, we combine Nassau County with all Suffolk.
It's not accurate for the town of Riverhead when you do that.
And, you know, we've run into this. The AMI is based on Nassau and Suffolk County, right? So it's $125,000. In the AMI in Riverhead, I think, is somewhere between 73 and 75. So we're way off the mark.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're getting amortized in with the Hamptons, etc. And today, and I'm wondering, and I don't know, Bob, you know, the extent of where you guys go, but who, I think it's HUD that sets those rates, if I'm not mistaken?
I think so.
Okay. So HUD has the data now that they, you know, they have the computer systems that they didn't have 50 years ago when they came up with this plan. They can easily look through the census and come up, I can look and find what the AMI is. Why can't they do it? This, you know, and the state, and I think it's important that the state engages in this, because all their efforts to affordable housing and all the speak that they do, they're not drilling down to the reality of how to get there.
Especially at the local level.
There's no question about it.
As soon as you put in affordable housing, the demand for school comes up as well. And so the school overcrowding becomes even more.
Yep.
And so, and again, I'll just go back to, again, I just want to make sure this is addressing the infrastructure, because like, you know, we put crossing guard on Plasky Street, but we have hundreds of kids now going across Route 58 to go to the north side of where housing is and so forth. And we don't have sidewalks in place for so long.
Right.
And that's my concern, is that, you know, how do you create safe passages basically? I mean, there are certain grants. I know that the Community Development Agency is working on safe route to school grants to add more sidewalk, but there's going to be a major cost to those, where we have to certainly, you know, the protection of the kids to start adding sidewalks, crossing areas, more crossing guards. It's a big undertaking.
We do have, they did get a grant, and they are working on the logistics, and they're just working out a deal. I think they have to go to Bosse's to agree to use some of their property. So it's in the works with the engineer, and that's good to hear.
In front of Sleepy's, right at the high school, you know, the kids go right into the middle of the road, because Sleepy's doesn't have sidewalks.
There's always room for more.
Yeah.
And that's bad.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Bob, I don't know if it's in your scope to see, do you drill down as far as looking at the school boundaries and with the state?
Yes.
Okay, and also with HUD, and maybe adjusting the AMI, so we start to get some realistic numbers?
Yeah, I think we can, we can make recommendations on that. Obviously, there's other factors, or, you know, the changes have to happen at different levels, but I think we can memorialize recommendations in the plan that could be moved forward.
If we could do the data gathering, that would help us in terms of reaching out to the applicable agencies to get them to at least acknowledge and hopefully address it, to make it more realistic to what we need and what we're experiencing at the town level.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, I'll say, just the fact that with the supermarket to the East End has put so much stress on our roads and on our traffic, forget, you know, I mean, it's just...
And on our police department, and on our ambulance corps.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and I don't, you know, and when I look back at the master plan that was done, I don't think anybody thought, well, what does this build-out look at, and look at in terms of all of this? And doing this master plan, I like to use my imagination and say, okay, if they build 4,000 units in Riverside, what is our school system going to be?
Right.
You know, we're gonna become the land of... You know, we're gonna become the land of schools.
And what does it mean to the residents of Riverhead in terms of taxes?
Absolutely, and to the quality of education and to people, you know, leaving, you know, for whatever reasons.
And the other improvements associated with that in terms of walking or transportation.
And do we have the ability to put a population cap on the town of Riverhead?
I'm not too sure you can.
I'm curious about that.
I think the estimates have been done on that of somewhere around 47, 48,000 people as a, when a complete build-out of this town is done. But there's so many variables involved with that. I don't know how you could actually pinpoint that down.
The only way you can, you can put a cap on it, Bob, is to.
Preserve more farmland.
Yeah, it's, it's farmland preservation or zoning change. You can't, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with a, with a town or municipality that's gonna cap their population.
I've worked in communities where they've had a growth management policy in place where they capped the number of dwellings that can be constructed per year, but not in terms of an absolute cap in terms of cutting off the population.
One last final question. You know, we're looking at EPCAL being developed, right? So, have you identified properties surrounding EPCAL that might be good places to put, you know, residential structures?
We haven't gotten that far yet in terms of adding residential component to the hamlets. I'm sure the civics would have, will certainly weigh in on that recommendation.
I hope so.
More houses in Wading River?
Well, you know, I mean, you know, I understand this, and Jeff, you brought it up. I mean, you know, you brought up with the historic corridor with Sound Avenue.
Right.
And, look, we all drive those roads, the traffic is horrendous. But if you don't put in, like, Edwards and Sound, a turning lane.
Correct.
And so, westbound traffic can continue, you know, there's gotta be some concessions, okay?
In fact, I, I talked to Ray Tobias. He's the traffic engineer with McLean Associates, who is working on the comp plan about that very intersection. And he said the exact same thing you just said, Bob, about, he doesn't see it needing a full intersection improvements at Edwards and 25. But he said you definitely need that left-hand turn lane to go south onto Sound. I'm sorry, south onto Edwards.
I'm just gonna say, when we moved here in 1999, there wasn't even a stop sign at that intersection. Not even a stop sign.
That's scary.
Also, the consideration of the governor's proposal about allowing accessory apartments.
That's huge.
That's a huge problem or could be a huge problem for the town itself.
Be a devastating factor for the town.
It's reckless, water, traffic.
Yeah.
You know, but that's, that's all been.
Overcrowded housing?
Yeah.
Definitely gonna lead to that.
It definitely takes away the town's ability to implement its own zoning.
Cuomo tried to do that, you know, a while back as well.
There's a big fight in Albany right now, so let's see where that's gonna go.
Definitely great conversation points have been had. Data gathering has been done.
Yep.
I think we're moving in a really good direction, a smart direction. So, I'm looking forward to the process taking.
Yeah, we just need to proceed to the next steps to start kind of formulating all of these, this input and data so we can start drafting policy goals and objectives that will lead us to recommendations.
Okay.
Riverhead 20, Riverhead 20 years from now, it's tough to imagine. It's, it's tough to figure out what's gonna, what's gonna be needed, what's not gonna be needed just from 2003 to now and then throw a pandemic in the mixture. The pandemic is stuff we've talked about with the comp plan too, how it affects so many other things. Will this be the only pandemic? Will this continue on? I mean, there's so many variables involved in this plan and things that you have to think about. So, but I think we've making some good groundwork, without a doubt.
Does the plan address a, like, a financial status of the taxpayer from years to come?
It will through the GIS, absolutely.
Eventually, like, I feel like, you know, currently we're school, we're paying relatively high taxes on the East End and it's certainly less than in Southampton and, and other surrounding towns.
Yep.
I mean, you know.
That's what the GIS will, will address.
Well, Southampton barely has any children and that's where most of our taxes are going, you know? And if they can afford to do so, their, their, their community is, you know, a seasonal community.
Wealthy seasonal.
A wealthy seasonal community. And so, they can pay, you know, $20 million for a mansion and add to the CPF and, and that's, they're financially stable and so they can afford to do that. But, you know, a good portion of our taxes, was Bill here? He left? Yeah, ask, ask him what the percentage is. I think it's like 67% taxes collected.
Yeah, somewhere in the high 60s, yep.
High 60s. All the tax, all the taxes that collectively by the taxpayers go to the school district. And that's a, you know, that's unfortunate. So, we have to have that balance that the community is totally different. And, you know, same thing with South Hall. You know, they're also a primarily seasonal community.
The long-term impact, it just keeps going up.
Yeah, I know.
So, it's not, it's something that at some point we have to find some way to, to let it stabilize. It's just for a single-family home like myself, the, the taxes are high.
I think also the, the build-out of EPCAL will add to the, the tax base.
Well, that's the problem. We've always been land-rich but tax-based poor. And that's been the problem the school district has, has echoed for years and years. And, and our share of the way it's designed to get the state aid was never fair for our community either. It has changed a little bit over the years, but I think there's a lot, a lot of room for improvement there too. And your town is, a big part of the wealth of your town in terms of real estate is based on your school district. And if you don't have a good school district, your land values are gonna take a dive. And it's very important to maintain a good school district and to keep your town vibrant. And again, when you're saying 67% of taxes go to the school district, you're talking a lot of money and that's, that's a huge investment to make this town be a better town.
I'll give you an example, somebody had no bought a house in Watermill, okay? It was about $2 million house. You know what their taxes are a year? $7,000. There's no school district. And that's why I bring up the boundaries that school, that were made 50 years ago plus, okay? And what that's going to do.
That's twofold, Bob, because I, I know 20 years ago when I was on the school board, we looked into, you know, could we break away, that's probably not the right word, but could we, we sever our ties with the south side of the river? And to do that, there was a lot of involvement from another district would actually have to accept that. So, if you look at the, the geographical area, you're gonna say, well, maybe it would be Hampton Bays, maybe it'd be West Hampton. But neither of those districts are interested in bringing in thousands more people to their school. Plus, there's a factor involved with the school district itself financially that if we were to say, okay, we'll sever that and we're just gonna educate kids from the town of Riverhead, the amount of money that the school district would lose from the people that they bring in from outside the, the town boundaries would cripple the school district. They wouldn't be able to operate without that money that they have for all of the infrastructure and the employees and everything. It's, it's a huge, huge project to happen and I don't know that it actually can. And I know through the business advisory, you know, we, we've looked into it and it's, it's a very difficult avenue to approach. And there's a lot of, lot of barricades in the way to make it happen.
Tim, to that point, I mean, I know that Conchog and Matituck school districts are shrinking. That's not affecting their ability to operate. So, in other words, I mean, just to be hypothetical, if we would have cut the school population in half, the school wouldn't, they would, you'd need less teachers, blah, 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 you know? So, I don't see how that's gonna implode the school system. You know, if, if we didn't have the, I understand they're gonna, the tax revenue comes in, but it comes in because we have to educate all those kids.
Right.
So, if we didn't have to do that, and I'm just being hypothetical here, they, they need less money, right? And I know, and I know it's a state thing, the state has to redo the school district.
Correct.
Right.
So, my question really was, will there be a financial outlook well attached to this and what the effects are? So, when you say, hey, I wanna, I wanna address, you know, affordable housing for millennials, well, what's the consequences of that?
And that's what the GIS does and that's one of the requirements I seek is to take a look at the fiscal impacts of your proposed action. And what are the fiscal impacts of you, the town board, adopting the comprehensive plan update in whatever, whatever form it takes? So, you will have that fiscal analysis attached to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, really, yeah, thank you very much.
Glad to see that it's well on its way finally.
We look forward to the next steps.
Yep, thank you very much.
I, I actually do have an announcement that just came in. We received 1,200 rapid COVID test kits for the town of Riverhead from the county. And we're gonna send out a press release later on today. We're gonna hold a drive where people can come to Town Hall on Tuesday, February 22, between the hours of 12:00 AM, excuse me, 12:00 PM, 12:00 AM, yeah, right. 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM. And it's on, based on the quality, the quantity that we have. I'm also told that if we need more and have another drive, we'll be holding it in the very near future. So, again, we're gonna be distributing here from the desk, the reception desk at Town Hall, free, at no cost, COVID-19 rapid tests for Riverhead residents. And we'll send, we'll post the details again, we'll post them on our website. And does anyone have anything else to add?
Do you know quantities per family or how that's gonna be set up?
We're gonna start with one, but if somebody really needs two, we're gonna give it to them. They said they have a family of four, we just got this in. But we're also told that we can ask for more. So, we're just gonna get out and see what the demand is. And if somebody wants three or four and we can get them, absolutely. They're there to be distributed.
The school district also announced that they put out a calling post that is available at the school district as well.
Yeah, for children, that's correct. And this is for our, this is for the residents and we'll put out the details.
Sure, the pandemic's on the downside now. You get the free tests, of course.
Thank you again, Jeff and Bob. And we have no items for executive session today, so this is gonna conclude our work session. I hope everyone remains safe and beautiful day, get out there. And can I have a first and a second to close the work session, please?
Sound motion.
Good, thank you, everyone. This work, work session is closed and have a good day.